Accused of never using.
Better fix clock Madison.
They miss you.
Good evening. Planning and zoning November eighth, meeting call to order.
Union thing.
Roll call please.
Jeff here.
Michael here.
Amanda here.
You in the ceiling.
Sage here.
Lynn here. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. Under God. That didn't really even sound like it, but okay.
Okay, we have the approval of tonight's agenda. Are there any amendments, deletions? Is this a time he can talk? No, because this is approving the agenda.
Oh.
Just questions. Okay, so may I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
I second the motion to approve tonight's agenda.
All favor?
Hi.
Motion by Amanda, all in favor, yes. Approval of the minutes from the last meeting. Has everybody had time to?
Yes.
To lose them? Um, does anybody have any corrections or amendments?
No.
No ma'am.
So there were a couple of points that were made during the, well, I think, but I think it's in actually the different, it's in the materials for tonight, so I'll just bring them up.
But is it in our minutes or is it others?
It's in the other portion.
Okay, so if it's not in our minutes, then may I have a second?
I'd make a second.
I can make a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
I second. I second.
When she's talking and he's talking, it's, okay.
I made a motion, he seconded.
Okay, Jeff made a motion, Michael seconded, all in favor.
Hi.
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 She's on delayed timer. Is it? Okay. Declaration of conflicts of interest. Does anybody have anything?
No.
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 Public comment. Is anybody there in the audience? No, is anybody on Zoom? No, without, we will close, public comment. Special presentations, we do not have any. Design review and land use public hearings. No, none, none. Discussion direction items, mint turn forward, land use code update now. I don't know.
What?
Michael has some questions he'd like to ask.
Can I, can I introduce the subject first? Awesome.
Well, we're just trying to figure out when he asked and we weren't sure where he wanted to be.
I just, yeah, yeah.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, whatever you want to do.
Yeah, um, so, um, thank you. Um, as requested and as promised, we are before you tonight to give you an update and a summary of the, uh, not only our meeting with you on September twenty seventh, um, or, and also our stakeholder interviews on the twenty eighth of September. So in the packet is a summary of the, um, planning commission's discussion from the twenty seventh. And also summary of each of our stakeholder interviews. Uh, we have, uh, Matt Farer with us tonight, um, and he's gonna do a quick, PowerPoint just to run down kind of the, the main overarching themes that we heard. I don't think any of them should be a surprise or a shock to anyone. Uh, it's what we expected. It's kind of where we were coming from as staff for all these years. Um, so that's the purpose of tonight's discussion is to follow up on that. Um, the planning commission was very clear in that you wanted transparency. We have tried to deliver that, uh, in providing a detailed summary of the notes from your discussion and from our interviews. We have, uh, tape recordings of each of those interviews. Uh, we've posted, I think, two of those online. I think we have two or three more to post. Um, so we are trying to be, that we were going to not be transparent, but I thought that was, uh, a good idea and a good suggestion. Um, so with that, uh, Matt, I think you're out there in Zoom land. Can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Uh, welcome. And Matt, do you, would you want us to be able to let you share your screen so you can walk us through that quick? Uh, what is it, three slides, four slides?
Yeah, yeah, I think I, I think I have access here, so.
Excuse me, Matt, can you turn your volume up a little bit, please?
I, I can try and talk a little louder.
That's much better, thank you.
Okay. Alright. And can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So, yeah, good evening. Um, thank you for the opportunity to share the outcome of the stakeholder meetings that we had back in September. This PowerPoint just is really brief overview of kind of who, who we spoke with and what were some of the key themes that emerged from our discussions, both with you as a planning commission, as well as the different stakeholders that we spoke with. Um, and the, the outcomes of those stakeholder meetings. Those, uh, the, the outcomes along with the outcomes or the key, key priorities that were identified in the community plan, as well as the town strategic plan, are, are gonna help provide us with direction as we craft the, this code assessment document, which will really provide kind of a detailed outline or a roadmap for us as we, we start delving into the update of, of Minter's code. So in terms of folks we, we spoke with, um, these, these people were identified in the summary document that was included in your packet tonight. I just wanted to provide a, another overview of who these folks were and kind of what, what their uh, roles are in, in the community. Um, just to highlight kind of why we spoke with them. A lot of these folks are architects or builders, engineers, real estate agents. So folks who have some level of experience working with the town's existing code. Um, that, that was really kind of the intent behind, uh, selecting these folks was they have experience working with the code. And so we, we asked them the same questions that we asked you uh, in terms of what, what would they like to see come out of an update to the town's code? What are, what are some challenges or concerns they have as far as the, the update process and, and the outcome of an updated code? And just to trying to get a general sense of what their experience has been, uh, working with the town's existing regulations. In terms of key themes that are, or priorities, um, that emerge from our discussions. And, um, if we missed any that you noted as you read through the, the summary document, definitely feel free to let Scott and I know. Um, but these, these were ones that really kind of emerged or stuck out in, in our minds is following our discussions with these folks. Uh, the first being a code that's user friendly. And, and I put that in quotation because user friendly can kind of mean different things to different people. Um, but generally a code that's clear and predictable. So clear meaning that the regulations have, are, are clearly explained in terms of their intent. Uh, the language is clear, use it, trying to use simple language and not a, a bunch of planning jargon or, or engineering jargon, or essentially technical jargon stuff, language that, that sort of laypeople can understand. And then in terms of predictability, uh, a code that if you read it, you understand kind of here are the steps I have to take and here's, here's what I can expect in terms of outcomes. So it's not ambiguous as to, okay, well, there's kind of this process I have to follow and I don't really know how long it's gonna take or, or what's gonna happen, uh, once I get into this. So really trying to make it clear for folks that once you, once you start, uh, say going down a variance process or a, a special or conditional use process, you have a pretty clear understanding of what's required of you and, uh, some level of predictability in um, what you're, what, what you're gonna be required to do in, in the process and um, sort of the, the criteria that's gonna be used to evaluate your application. So what underneath this, this key theme, uh, I bulleted some, some different, um, ideas that, that emerged from our discussion, just to add a bit more detail to what exactly this means. So we, we heard from a number of folks that we need to update the, the codes, figures, tables, graphics. Uh, especially we heard a, a number of times, the building height, um, illustrations are very confusing, so that, that's one we'll definitely clean up. Um, but having, having different illustrations or, or tables in the code that clearly described the intent, intent of the regulations. Uh, and one of the things I, I talked to Scott about is that I've seen in other codes where even if there are illustrations and there's some some ambiguity or some confusion about what, what's required, uh, that have some language in the code that says if there's any, could, any confusion about what's required and always defer back to the, the actual language in the code, so that it's very clear. I mean, ideally the illustrations, everything will be very clear, but if there's ever any question, the code language always takes precedent over any illustration in the code. Uh, so I think that's important to clarify and, and I don't think that's, there's language like that, that's currently in the town's code. Um, and I, I think we talked about this with the planning commission back in September, having definitions that are clear and concise. It's, it's easy to get carried away with definitions and make them a paragraph long, so I, I think trying to make definitions that are clear as possible and, and as succinct as possible will, will help make it user friendly. Um, we talked about having definitions for any acronyms that are used in the code. Uh, and also having a format where if we use an acronym, we, we spell it out. Um, when we first use it and then, and then subsequently use the acronym, um, later on in code. As I mentioned, use of simple language in the code. Uh, trying our best to really clearly describe review processes and criteria for decision making. Again, uh, making it clear to an applicant that here's, once you submit an application, here's what you're required to submit, here's the review process you go through. And here's the criteria that the planning commission and/or the board of trustees will use to make a decision. I'm sorry, town council will use to, uh, make a decision on your application. Um, and then where possible, there was some, some interest expressed in having um, simplified review processes for certain types of projects and maybe, uh, where possible, streamlining some of those processes. Uh, second key theme that emerged was having a code that facilitates the implementation of the community plan. Um, and this, this was first noted with the discussion, uh, with you all, the planning commission, was that the community plan really needs to be the, the document that provides direction for the code update. Um, so we, we heard that and, and we'll definitely use that as, as the guide for, or, or as sort of the direction for the code update. Um, and, and to elaborate on that, um, we, we heard and, and it's in the code, in the community plan as well as having a, a code that encourages the type of development that the community wants, while at the same time preserving enhancing, um, interns unique character. And I know it says that in the, in the community plan throughout that document, uh, and that also came up in, in many of the discussions we had with stakeholders was uh, we, we really need to be diligent about maintaining, uh, the special character that Mintern has. Um, and then also, um, trying to have a code that focuses on what the community wants. And we, we talked about this a bit back in September, but having, having a code that makes it easy to do what the community wants to see happen in the, in the commu- in town and then making it harder to do things that the community doesn't want or, or prohibiting those sorts of things. Um, and I think one of the, the interesting comments that emerged from our discussion with the stakeholders was having an aspirational code. Uh, a lot of times codes focus on what communities don't want. Um, and so in this discussion, it was suggested that we try and have a code that, that is more aspirational and talks, kind of focuses more on what the community does want. And then finally, having a code that's flexible and enables creative, creativity. And there's a, a number of ways to go about this. Um, that I, I think we'll try and detail further in the, the code assessment document. So with that, um, that's, that's really the extent of um, the presentation. I, I will, let me just quickly go to the next slide. In terms of next steps uh, for, for the Mintern Forward process, in November or this month, uh, we're working to complete the code assessment and, and we'll have that shared with you. Um, and then I think the, the hope is in, in, uh, at your meeting in December is to present that document and have a bit of a discussion about that. And then, uh, also in December, really kind of start, once we get the code assessment done, uh, start, start delving in and doing the heavy lifting, um, and get started on the code update. And then in January, kind of after the holiday season, start doing, um, getting the community engaged with the code update process. So that, that's all I have as far as a presentation. Um, again, if there's any questions, comments, if there were any priorities that you noted when you were reading through that summary document that, that we didn't highlight, um, definitely let us know.
Thanks, Matt. Um, I don't know that I have anything to add at this point, but, um, sounds like Michael, you've got some questions or?
There's some questions that are just general questions that we can ask.
Okay.
Later.
Okay.
And focus on s- some of this right now.
Okay, Madam Chair, how would you like to proceed?
Ask the, before we, before the end, uh, I do have.
We'll just go down the line.
Okay.
Um, first of all, I don't know the answer to this, so what does code assessment mean?
Um, so that is one of the, the main things that, um, we need to do, um, Matt and I. The coded assessment is, is a high level look at the code from the perspective and through the lens of the community plan. Um, through the comments that we've received, these comments and kind of what, what we're hearing as far as the main goal should be. Um, coming back to this body and the town council and, and, you know, essentially saying, here's, here's our observations of the current code and how it aligns or doesn't align with the community plan, how it aligns or doesn't align with other strategic plan goals of the town. Um, misalignments within the code itself. Um, just kind of a high level, um, assessment of the things that we have to go in and fix. It's not gonna be detailed on page thirty six of article twenty six, we have to change this word or, you know, that will come. Uh, Matt, am I, am I doing this justice? I think that's, that's our goal as part of the code assessment.
Just general assessment.
Yeah. What, what are deficiencies and what, what are our target areas and what's the likely outcome of this code update gonna be? What, what are the things that we're striving for?
And then, uh, um, I don't even know if it's, you know, some of this stuff. Um, like looking over that entire packet, you know, and different comments, you know? I don't know exactly. You know, there's gonna be a lot of time for us to pound the weight in there, you know, if, um, you know, some of this, some of the, some of the interesting things that I just noticed from the, you know, these initial, um, discussions. Uh, for example, I wasn't even involved in the whole thing, but you know, pounding through the hundred bo- block seemed like a big ordeal. There's some comments of changing stuff on the hundred block, you know? My personal opinion, even at this point, probably a bad idea. Which, it just, you see, guys, you guys spent a ton of time on that and, you know, and, and supposedly we're rewriting seventeen, the, you know, chapter sixteen because sixteen has some loopholes and stuff and got chopped up and I don't, I, I, you know, I don't personally think that's a great idea, but we can, you know, just discuss, discuss that more in the future. Um, as far as, you know, comments on, on variances, not being needed for non-conforming stuff, I think that, you know, we have lots of time here. So, you know, and I think that, you know, ideally you wanna conform. And if you're not conforming, you know, I think variances is just another step. Um, it's not a bad thing. Uh, I think that overall, in general, you know, I, I like, you know, we have a list of stakeholders, but as well as e- every one of us here, you know, know, you know, has, are, are involved with different groups of people through town and, you know, this, the citizens of town are the main stakeholders and, and you know, we'll just keep moving forward as far as that goes and, uh, and then other questions or anything else that come up with, I can ask later and we can move down the line. Or I'll take thirty minutes.
Take whatever you want.
I, I don't really have anything.
Um, I have. I joined in on two of those interviews and I watched the two that are online already. I think we have our work cut out for us because we have some who are very critical of our code and some who think it's, we need some changes. Um, and one of them I was very pleased with because I felt they definitely understood what meant, where Mintern was coming from and the people of Mintern. And that was Mr. Sykes, so I hope we pay a little bit extra attention to what he expressed. Um, I agree with Michael. I don't think we need to go back right now to fix the one hundred block at the moment. I think we need to focus on chapter sixteen and get it together. And that can be something later. I have heard a lot of, let's get rid of variances. And now I hear, I'm hearing people, people who wanna bring variances to the foreground, so that's gonna be something that's gonna be a discussion point. Um, and what else do I have? And I don't know, are we supposed to go through and tell what we agree or disagree with this at now or later on time?
But, you know, I don't know if you need to, you, you can do what you want. Um, I don't know if we need to say whether we agree or disagree. This is just a summary of what people had to say. It's, it's one, one set of input that we're gonna use. We have input from the planning commission. We'll seek input from other people as we go along the way and so it's up to you.
So it just seemed that certain things were popping out maybe more so than others.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, you know, building height calculations.
Discuss it later and down the line and then we'll get to that.
Okay.
Um, well, I thought Matt did a really good job, um, summarizing, uh, on the, on the slideshow, so thank you for that, Matt. Um, the only thing that I feel like was maybe left out on that summary was, um, just confirming what we've done on, in the community plan with the zone districts. Like, there was a consistent call out to the zones, um, throughout, I think, almost every single stakeholder. I didn't see that as like a summary on Matt's slide, so maybe just make sure, cause I think some people agreed, some people said like love, you know, so I just felt like, you know, we just wanna, I don't think we wanna veer from the community plan, like Michael said, we don't wanna go backwards, but just make sure that, you know, um, cause that was a common comment or a common, um, topic area. It's just good to get asked.
Ju- just, so I understand, um, just making sure that we pay enough attention to, or at least
Yeah.
um, make sure that in the summary reflects the fact that the community plan is the driving
Yep, guiding plan and then, especially as we get into the, the code re- code change, that it's reflected about what the community plans on districts and not maybe what had been suggested in some of these stakeholder comments.
Okay.
Can I clarify one thing, just?
Hold on one minute. Sage?
Sage? Yes, ma'am.
You have any comments?
No, ma'am.
I just wanna, it, it, just to clarify what with Lynn's comment as far as variances, you know, variances going away and coming back. If, if there was any misunderstandings. Like I said, I, I think that you should conform and if you can't conform, then you should have to apply for variance, whether it gets passed or not. Like, if, if they were, just to clarify.
What part of the code does variances fall under? Sixteen?
Yeah.
So, I mean.
We'll go over it.
And, and your experience, Scott, I, I can't imagine you've ever been in a municipality that doesn't have variances. I don't know of any situation in a town where you're gonna be able to just blanket, make a blanket statement or an ordinance that says we don't have variances and
Now, there was a suggestion in there that discussed the fact of working with the code to make it that perhaps there wouldn't have to be so many coming before us.
We, we had a couple of different comments. Um, Mr. Malik, I think, had suggested and I, I certainly wouldn't presume to put words in his mouth, but we've heard this from other people, uh, whether it's code enforcement or variances, if someone's not conforming, they should either go for variance or conform to the code. I think his point may have been partially rooted in what, what Mintern North was proposing. You know, I think Mintern North as a PUD and the concept of allowing for variations within a PUD confused a lot of people. What, why do we have standards if we're gonna let people throw out or, or change setbacks or building height or whatever? And, and the reasons for that are pretty clear in the code as they are in most codes when it comes to PUDs, you're supposed to be achieving some better design. Put that aside. Um, so I, I think part of his comments were like, if you're gonna just give out variances like candy, why do you have these rules? So maybe we should have less chances for people to vary from the code, just have a code that allows what you want, which falls in line with some of the things that we heard from other stakeholders. Um, Brian may have been one of them, Brian Sykes and Todd Biechola. You know, have an aspirational code, focus more on what you want, not what you don't want. Um, and then there were comments, uh, that, that had to do with probably more the historic preservation guidelines. And if someone's property against their will perhaps gets designated as historic and it, it makes their process harder, could there be more latitude at the staff level for minor things that don't necessarily align completely with historic reservation code or guidelines, but are not something that someone should necessarily get a variance for? Does that make sense? So going along with one of the main themes, which is flexibility. Um, that's for the designer, that's for the property owner, it's also for staff. Um, and, and that gets to some other comments that had to do with the process and building something that is, um, if there's streamlined, it has to be based on trust. In my mind, the clearer the code can be and, and the better the guardrails are, if, if there's this set of standards or design standards, guidelines. And it's really clear what the intent of that particular set of standards is or the regulation itself. It makes it easier for staff to operate in a place of trust because there's these bumpers, right? It's like a toddler, right? You let them off a little leash and, and they're not gonna get in too much trouble, same idea. I may be going a little afar on this explanation, but that's what I took from this whole conversation about variances. Maybe, maybe not every little thing needs a variance because quite frankly, variances take a lot of time and money for applicants. They take a lot of time for staff and for you and for council. Uh, I also saw a comment, I think it was from Michael Pukas, who said, um, why does a variance have to go to planning commission and town council? It's a double, double stop. Why not just?
Response.
Why not just, I, I don't even remember what my response is, but you can tell me, um, uh, you know, sometimes most, most places have a board of adjustments. It's a one stop. And it's usually the board of commissioners or town board that is the board of adjustments. They're the only ones that hear variances typically.
The, the PUD thing is a little bit unders- somewhat understandable, but basic. You know, like if, if you wanna build your house, y- y- you know, what, basic stuff that comes up. If you can't conform, you know, I think I made my position. you know, I think I made my position pretty clear.
Well, the, the problem, the problem comes, there's a couple of problems. One is that to, to Hanny's point, there, in my opinion, that you have a variance is a process. Right? It's an actual process. Okay? And like it or not, what's set up now, whether you think, whether, you know, Michael thinks it's too many steps. I would argue, I'm playing devil's advocate, that it, the reason it goes in front of us as a referring body, we don't make the decision, the, the end decision, we look at it, we refer it, we make a decision, we, and we say we are recommending to the council. We've looked at it and you guys can either choose to dig, drill down on it, or you take our word for it and pass it. And there's that steps, those steps are there because it's a variance. It's something that doesn't fit in the code. And, and because it needs those steps in my opinion, because then something doesn't get missed by accident and sneak through. Now, on the PUD side, to your point, if a PUD comes through and it has variations, variations are not variances. Variations are something that doesn't fit in a nice box in the guardrails with the code. And the reason it doesn't is because it, there's a process by which the PUD process is there for a reason to create something to Scott's point that is not easily, you can't use the code the way it's, it sits because you, you need this process to, to achieve something bigger than just one development, one commercial building or one house. So there's a process for it. And if there are variations from the code, which been turned north had, then as an applicant or an owner of a property, then you explain why you have to vary a little bit from one part of the code because it doesn't fit. Like for instance, if you wanted to put, you know, more density in an area, that's why the PUD process is there. Right? So I think variances are one thing, variations from the code through a separate process that's created for something is, you know, there are reasons for all of, all of that. I don't see us getting away from the variance process. There's, there's always going to be a need for it. And I think we should be very careful about trying to streamline it and just say, okay, let's, let's just make it a staff approved thing. Or let's just.
No, you, you actually can't, you can't do that.
We don't want, I just don't see it. I don't see streamlining it.
One other thing from that conversation and hopefully you'll have some memory to this. We did not change the footage of a house or the percentage of a lot to create more landscape. Which was said in that same discussion. I believe we've changed it. We upped it. It was forty percent and we went to forty-five percent. This was back when the previous planning and zoning person was here.
Are we, are we talking about a specific project?
No, it was discussed.
Increasing lot size.
I think, yes. Michael, Michael Pukas and, and I and Matt got into a discussion about, um, impervious. You know, I think Michael has had comments before the planning commission before.
Changed why we made it more pervious. But we didn't. We, we did not, we made the lot coverage more because we thought forty percent wasn't enough for some of the new buildings and what people wanted to do. And we went back and forth between forty percent and fifty percent. And we wound up at forty-five back then.
Well.
And now we've gone up.
So.
But we did not say we were doing this to create, keep more landscaping there. We did say that we wanted, I think it was five trees per lot.
That regulation changed when Janet was here. I think that's what Michael was referring to.
That's when Janet.
Yeah, but then, but then two years ago, two and a half years ago, we changed it again to allow for increased lot coverage and increased impervious coverage in some zone districts to incentivize things like eighties.
Correct.
Right?
Had nothing to do with landscaping.
Had nothing to do with landscaping. That's what he assumed in his discussion. And being, we were talking, that discussion talked a lot about assumptions. That was not what happened. That was not why it was. I just wanted to clarify that. I don't like, like if you were to leave us, I don't like people coming back and saying, well, he did this. You don't go backwards and, and criticize other people's accomplishments. Whether they were right or wrong, you know, you go on. And I felt like that was thrown in there for why? I don't know. Why would you say somebody changed it to put in more landscaping? It just, it, it bothered me that there was a lot of work done. I mean, I've been here a long time. And there's been a lot of work. There's been many planners. Not everything goes right. Not everything goes wrong. But if we could sustain away from that kind of thing, I would think it would be better.
So it really highlights the fact that I think one of the major themes in, in my mind, uh, that I came away with talking to these practitioners and you and my own sensibilities, and I think Matt's as well, is the intent. So often, you know, cause all of these things that get changed over time and pieced together, the intent gets lost because most times you'll have good intentions. Whatever the situation is at that point in time, Janet, me, whoever, there was a good intent behind that and your intent as a planning commission, right? Um, but that gets lost if it's not explained in the code. This is the reason for this percentage of lot coverage. Here's what we're trying to achieve, which gets to this aspirational thing instead of what we're trying to avoid.
So to your point, in the chapter sixteen rewrite, is there something wrong with using that kind of language?
No.
Saying the intent of this part of this section, blah, blah, blah.
Here's what we are trying to achieve.
Just a short, the intent is this and then lay it out.
That's exactly what.
That's, that's exactly right. Yeah.
Here.
Like, I work a lot with regulations, like financial services regulations, and we always have like either like a white sheet that's like the spirit of the regulation.
Yeah.
That's the spirit of the regulation.
I think that's.
What we're trying to do.
Who brought that up at our planning commission discussion about IBC and how the IBC does a good job of laying out what the particular code section is all about and how to interpret it and how to apply it. Might have been Tom.
Yeah, I mean, at least at that point, you're, you're taking fifty percent of the arguments away.
Right.
They can't go, well, you know.
That's right.
Nope.
No.
Right here.
Intent is.
And that'll help with things like variances too.
Totally.
If someone, if someone comes to us, which, you know, I've, I've been in so many variances in my lifetime, it's usually has nothing to do with an actual hardship. There's creative ways to make something fit within a hardship. It's just because they want to do what they want to do.
Well, yeah.
Or the code doesn't anticipate whatever it is that we didn't think about. That's another valid point and of a, of a variances. Codes can't anticipate every situation.
Well, and to Lynn's point, like, you know, ten years from now, five years from now, whatever.
But
permissions.
But that's our job is to figure that out. Like that's why we're doing.
Town has this year is hopefully know of what's happened in the past, know of what's happening in the future, trying to make it work. I mean, certainly town council doesn't want to sit there and read all this.
No, that's why we've had such struggles in the last fifteen, twenty years of building and developing with the old code as it was written because it was not very easy to see.
No, cause it was so like prehistoric.
Or, or present five sides of, well, it could be this, it could be that.
If the intent is more clear, it, it starts to neutralize these arguments of, well, you let so and so do it ten years ago and there's all these precedents and why can't I do it?
Those are the guardrails you were talking.
That's going to be one of your major experiences.
These are the new rules.
So.
Yeah.
Going to be something you're going to have to deal with.
One thing that we use a lot in like, in my registration, regulation spaces, we have what we call plain business language. So like when we're defining terms, like today had a lot of conversations about like acronyms and the usage. Like we'll use the technical definition and then we'll also have the plain business language. Like, like definitions side by side. So that if there is somebody that's an architect that wants that kind of more technical, you know, jargon, but then there's the user or the citizen that wants to pick it up and just understand, understand, understand that those definitions. So it's always like, you know, acronym, technical, plain business.
That's a great idea.
It's actually a really good, really good idea because most people can't understand that. So.
No, and I think that's important. And I think that's why a lot of people don't show up here in this room.
Yeah.
Because.
That's absolutely true. Yep.
To understand what's going on, to be here, to be able to speak. Cause they don't want to get up there and say something and feel like they're either not being heard or they're not presenting themselves properly, or they don't know how to say what they're trying to say. And I think that's going to make a big difference if we can pull that off.
Right.
What else? Matt, do you have anything to jump in on here?
Um, no, I, I just wanna, you know, there's been a lot of discussion about variances and, and I would say, um, I think Scott, to your point, I, I think, um, you explained it well, is it's I, I would never foresee a code that doesn't allow for variances because there's always going to be some unique situation where somebody has a hardship. And, and that's a key word and it's, I, I've seen places where variances are. I, you know, I, I don't like your thirty foot tall, um, building height restrict, uh, restriction. So I want to do forty feet and I'm going to apply for a variance and, and I, I just want to do what I want to do. And, um, I don't think that's really a justification for a variance. Uh, it's really, there's some unique aspect of your property or your project that requires a variance from the strict application of, of the regulations. Um, so I think it's important to have that as a tool. Um, otherwise folks just have to comply with the code and um, I, I think you start running into some legal issues there. Um, so I don't think it's, it's eliminating the, the variance allowance. It's just, how can we craft the code? So it is, so there is some more inherent flexibility in it. So folks can have a, a more opportunity to do the type of projects that, that the community wants to see without coming in for a variance. Uh, and then at the same time, if somebody comes in for a variance, making sure there's sort of valid reasons for it rather than I just want to do what I want to do.
If I may, um, that's a really good segue into, I think, one of the comments that, you know, prompted this discussion. Um, it might've been our discussion with Larry and Earl, uh, that morning where I think it was focused around existing buildings that were, you know, that are old, right? May or may or may not be historic structures or designated or whatever. But people wanting to update these old buildings. Um, the Bloodworths was a great example of this three or four years ago, Christie and Nathan, when they had their house and they wanted to go up. And we had all these hearings about, uh, whether or not that required a variance or not. Greg Sparhawk was adamant that they needed a variance. Staff thought that they didn't. And that led to Richard and I spending the better part of a month, uh, updating article twenty-two, which is our uh, variation or our, excuse me, our pre-existing non-conformity section to allow for a little more discretion. I wouldn't call it flexibility, but a little more discretion based on some other codes elsewhere in Colorado. On those similar, um, situations where it incentivizes or at least allows someone a path forward to upgrade an existing home, keep people in the community that you want to keep in the community without, you know, essentially prohibiting them from investing in their house.
So what? Why don't we le- level our, our expectations higher? And then be like discrepancies at the bottom, be like, all right, what, what are your disputes about like your certain part, property? Then we can like figure it out from there. But like, at least by that point, we have legally taken care of ourselves. So that there's no, we've crossed our Ts, dotted our Is, we got it. And then we could deal with like, all right, well, maybe because of this certain situation, because you're this close to the river or you're like, you're this close to their land. Then we can figure that out for ourselves. But at least at that point, we've been vigilant, you know what I mean?
But the variance process or the, if there is dispute on the, you know, conforming, that's coming first in their application prior to the actual body of the application?
I'm sorry, you cut out. So.
I think that it, I think I understand what you're saying, man. I think, I think that if, if you can't comply, it would make sense to go variance application first, before you start spending money on your design. That's what I don't.
Yeah, that's what I'm, that's what I'm asking. Cause that's, yeah.
What I don't want to see happen is that we go through this trouble of putting a code together. And then we start getting variances to everything. We, if we're going to go through the trouble of having the code, we need to make that code have a purpose. And we need.
No, it needs to be cut dry. Yeah.
We don't want to increase reasons for variances necessarily. I like the hardship. I like the fact that if there's something specifically different with your lot, something, maybe there's, um, a pre-existing non-conforming on it. Um, you, you give an extra five percent. You don't count that as part of the building or something like that, you know, work it that way. But I'm not going to sit here and go, and I don't think any of you would want to go through a whole code that we change for everybody.
I think what Sage is suggesting is there's a lot of costs, like we, and we had to go through this through our addition, but we spent a lot of time with our architecture, architect, which was Greg Sparhawk, going through, hey, this is what we envisioned. And he was like, no, 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 that's a variance. That's a variance. That's a variance. And so we had to pull ourselves back, pull ourselves back. And I think what Sage is suggesting is like having, I don't know. I mean, because we didn't, we didn't have any variances and there were no variances. And so because we pulled it all back, but had we been allowed, um, we would have had a different design.
Couple, couple of things. Um, so you know, back to the whole notion of variance versus variations, PUDs versus straight code. Matt, jump in anytime, but, um, you know, the, the reason why PUDs exist is because of codes, because of Euclidean zoning, which is this is exactly where your setbacks are. This is exactly how tall your buildings can be. This is blah, blah, blah. Which is all good stuff, you know, that, that has led to so many great, uh, communities and building forms and all these things that were intended when someone came up with that zoning code back in the turn of the last century. Um, P, PUDs are a reaction to that because codes are generally inflexible, right? And particularly in our environment where we have so much topography to work with and so many natural environments that we want to protect, it really incentivized is incentivized people to think more creatively about how they laid out land and how they protected certain areas. And in a lot of ways, it worked out well. And some places developers took advantage of it and there really wasn't any real benefit from an open space or sensitive land standpoint. They just bastardized PUD to take advantage of stuff. My point is, um, codes, the, the trend now with, uh, rewrites of codes, whether it's a county code or a city code or whatever, is to eliminate the need for PUDs and create zone districts that are more accommodating, you know, kind of taking a look back at what kind of built forms are already in the community. What can we learn from that? What kind of variances are already out there? Like on Red Cliff, every property in Red Cliff is a variance waiting to happen. Their, their property lines are all screwed up. The surveying screwed up for the last eighty years. That's.
And, and you're preaching to the choir.
Yeah, and Mintern suffers from a lot of the same stuff. I'm not saying that we should ignore uh, pre-existing non-conformities or get away, get, get away from variances. I agree with Matt. I agree with you guys. Variances have a place. You have a role in, in reviewing them. Um, but the other thing, one of the goals of the community plan is to revisit uh, article twenty-two, which is the non-conformity section and dig up that work that Richard and I did. Maybe it's more appealing today and maybe it makes more sense moving forward. So.
I'm sorry, you guys. And just one more thing, like I was gonna say, I think at the bottom of it, like what, what they're asking for and like because of like the property lines and what Minter's all about, maybe we could like be definitive about like what we exactly want. And then if there's a discrepancy like at the bottom, then we can deal with it as that's our job. Like that's what we should do. But everything else should follow the guidelines. And then there's those like those little tits and tats about like how we should figure it out. That's what we're trying to get to the bottom of, correct? Hello?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. You know, it's always when, when somebody reads our code and comes in here and there's no changes need necessary to be made too.
Right.
Process go a lot faster.
Right.
Come to some median where we can make that happen.
Well, and you know, let's not forget. Well, and you know, let's not forget the, the most variance standards or criteria. Uh, key off of not just hardships, but they're usually based on. Some showing of a peculiar lot, shape, size, dimensions. Steepness, whatever it is that is unlike other lots in, in a particular area. That therefore creates practical hardship in designing a similar type of use for that lot, right?
Correct, and that's why we still have a job, that's what we have to do. That's what we have to do, but bottom line, we have to like put it down on paper. Say exactly what we want and then that those discrepancies can be at the bottom, be like. Oh yeah, this property was like a little bit like five feet off the river. Or like too close to this property because they have their trees too close or whatever. Like, those are the things that we have to talk about, but like, everything else has to be. Obviously, what we're talking about.
Yeah, most, most codes in your job are to understand and assess the impacts. That's usually what codes are, you know, based off of is, you know, an assessment of impacts.
So wouldn't it be, would it be like, not okay, or would it be okay? To like have at the bottom of like their. Agreement, like discrepancies, like this land goes over, you know, like. Everything else is met except for these certain things, and then it comes across our plate.
Yeah, I mean, those, I, I hear what you're saying and I think, um. For different land use applications, we definitely require that in written form. PUDs, uh, chief among them. So when you apply for a PUD, you have this narrative that describes what it is you're trying to build and, um. It specifically should address any variations that don't fit nicely into normal standards. Um, if someone comes through a DRB application, that's something that we usually flag when we sit down with someone at a pre-application level.
Okay, well, how about, how about, I'm not allowed to do this, cause I'm not. But the north, like, what happened when that came about? Like, that's like front and center right now, right?
I don't think we should discuss that currently, Sage.
No, 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 okay, I'm, okay, we won't discuss it, I'm just saying like. I, that's not, that's not my point, I'm saying like, if it ever happens in the future, what should we do in the future? To help that situation?
Well, just any, any PUD that comes in that is requesting variations, you have. Well, you have a part to play, we do, uh, staff, um. Clarifies what the variance or variation requests are and. The code is very clear already about. Uh, if someone's proposing a variation to one of our standards. The applicant has to justify why and what. Specific benefits are being pro- propose or produced by the town granting that variation, that's how it's supposed to work with.
Okay.
Yeah, we already have that in place.
I don't really think so, okay, yeah.
So, and I would just add, you know, this discussion about PUDs or planned unit developments, the intent. Is to allow for a creative, unique type of development. That, that the town's regulations wouldn't otherwise allow for and it's, it's. Allows a developer to essentially write their own zoning regulations for their project. And I, I think Scott noted this, uh, as he was talking is, there needs to be some benefit to the community. And when I worked for the Town of Eagle, I would say seventy-five percent of the town is zone PUD. And that was largely because the town's code was essentially broken. And, and a lot of the projects that are, are PUDs are really. It's just because the developer didn't wanna come in and get five variances, it, it, some of those projects really weren't. Anything unique or special, it's just. Um, the developer wanted to, to do their own zoning for their project and, and the Town of Eagle was willing to accommodate that and. When you start to have that many PUDs, I mean, each PUD is. A different sort of land use code that, that staff has to administer and it, it can become very confusing. Um, when the city of Denver updated their land use code a number of years ago, that was something they. Tried to do was, was eliminate PUDs because, uh, and you can imagine a place like Denver, they probably had hundreds. Of PUDs they had to administer and that becomes extremely challenging, um. Especially if, if again, as the developer writes a PUD, some of them are done well, some are, are done very poorly. Um, so it's, again, I think PUDs like variances are something that the town needs to, to. Consider very seriously about, well, do, you know, it. It, is this a benefit to the community or do we, we make them sort of, um, go, uh, comply with our, our normal regulations?
You, you confused me right there, Matt. Maybe I don't. Is, so. You know, at Minter, we only have like. Certain blocks of land left, pretty much. So my, I assumed the PUD was based on a certain quantity or something. Uh, like is, what? Different than Eagle, Eagle were a lot of open land, Eagles booming and growing. Branching out all over the place, we, we don't specifically have all that land. So where he's saying that places can be quantified as a PUD. Like a duplex and a triplex and that stuff's not a PUD, right?
No.
No, but the way the code reads is once you get much past that, it is. And what we talked about in the, in previous discussions, and one of the, I think in the community plan was. Poss- the possibility of talking about, correct me if I'm wrong, but maybe up to a higher level. Eight units, ten units, that maybe in the future, the town might consider allowing without having.
Ooh, oh.
As long as it fit other.
So, yeah, I, I didn't realize, I thought PUDs were like big projects on. Big parcels.
They, they typically are, some codes have a minimum, uh, number of acres to be able to qualify for a PUD. Uh, overlay zone district. Um, five acres, two, so, yeah.
Think we're making good progress, we're at the beginning stages.
Already, we have a million questions, perhaps we should go on.
Well.
Even administrative question.
Sure.
So Matt, um, has shared the timeline, um, and, and I'm sorry, I was trying to find where the original timeline was. Did we stick with the original or do we, we'll be able to shorten up and expedite?
We're not gonna expedite anything.
Okay, so.
We, we have so much on our plate, Amanda, um, ju- just so you know, um, Michelle has sent an email to council. Uh, basically saying, we cannot up or, or take on any more, um, projects as a staff. We have Minter North, uh, Battle North. Beldon potentially coming back, we have like four or five main priorities that the staff is focused on. Um, we were supposed to have a code assessment done in August and September. We were gonna, we were gonna try to get through stakeholder interviews and stakeholder outreach, the first part of that in June, July. And have a code assessment done and then report back to council in September and planning commission. That obviously didn't happen, so we're about two months behind and we're trying to make up some time and, and do what we can, Matt certainly is. Uh, being really helpful in that, but I, I wouldn't expect this to be expedited anymore than it is. I know it's important, we all know it's important, the mayor has reiterated again and again how we need to get this. Going and.
To get this, but we need to. Also accomplish some of those other things that we've been waiting for, for so long, so it's kind of all come into one place.
Yeah. Yep, I know.
I agree, we don't need to expedite this terribly, we have a code, it is functioning, there are issues. We've learned where a lot of those mistakes are, we can work with that. And we'll get through it.
It, it, I'm not trying to take any importance away from this, everyone understands how important it is and, you know, I guess my message is we're doing the best we can to keep this moving. Um, yeah.
It's, everything in Minter takes a long time, yeah.
And don't, don't worry you guys too, we can always readdress it in the future, so. She's, uh, actually, she's right, it's already, plan is in effect and we'll figure it out.
I mean, we've been working on it for years.
Yeah, um, on that note, um.
Did we bring back, you said in your notes, you were gonna try to refer to what we had done in the past.
Yep, and Matt and I wanted to get through tonight and present the summary and discuss the summary notes and make sure we're all. Not in agreement, but we're all understanding, you know, what we heard, uh, what some of the key themes are and what we, what we as staff believe as our direction moving forward. Uh, things that we need to pay attention to, um, and then. A couple of things, I think there was the work that we had done previously, so I think that's one of our things that we can address. In one of our future meetings during the code assessment or after the code assessment. Um, kind of summarizing what we've already done and seeing if it aligns with what we're, what we think we're gonna be doing this time around. What, what we can use from the previous work and what might not be very useful anymore. Um, and then the other thing that we had talked about in September was, uh, primer on form-based codes versus typical zoning code. And I think that, maybe that's something we can.
Hybrid of some kind.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We've talked about wanting to hear about that more.
Yeah, so I think those are also out there.
Which one does that refer to?
Um, Matt, jump in anytime, but I, you know, for me, a form-based code is really aspirational. Um, and it's, it's descriptive in graphics and narrative of what. Uh, a place is supposed to look like. The, the actual functionality and the building mass and height and how it relates to pedestrians and that whole thing, um. Hybrid, go ahead.
So why, why don't? Oh, sorry.
Wait a minute.
Uh, what I was gonna say is, yes, Scott, you're correct, form-based is. It, it emerged from, um, so sort of the traditional approach to planning or zoning is. It, we, we call it Euclidean zoning. Where essentially you have your zone districts that you say, commercial stuff goes here, residential uses go here, industrial goes here. Uh, and maybe you have some mixed-use zone districts. And so it really focuses on the, the use of the property. And, and there's some acknowledgement of the design of buildings, but not a lot. Where, and then a form-based, a pure form-based really focuses more on the design of buildings. How buildings interact with, um, sidewalks and streets. And, um, i- i- in a real sort of pure hot form base, you're, you, there's not really. You, you build your building and what goes on inside is, is not really that heavily regulated. It doesn't say you can only have, you can only do. Uh, residential uses in your building, commercial uses, things like that, it's more. Here's what we, we want buildings to look like and, and how they, uh, how they interact with the street. And, and public spaces, community gathering spaces, things like that, and, and you kind of let whatever. Goes on inside the building happen, a, a hybrid kind of takes, takes both approaches. Where there's more emphasis on the design of buildings, but also there's, there's some regulations around. Okay, here, here's what's allowed to happen inside the building and as far as the use of the property.
Thanks, Matt.
You're welcome.
And I think at the last time we talked, we talked about definitely looking into that.
Yeah. So, I think.
It's a good discussion for the public engagement and all that stuff.
Matt, I just wanna say one thing, I know this is gonna be hard to get through and we're all gonna have a million questions. Um, but I do feel our current commission compared to sometimes in the past. Is one that reads everything. I do feel we have commission members here that actually read the packet, hopefully before they come to a meeting. So, I think that's a good point.
It's, yeah, that's beneficial, I know, I know places I work where. You show up to a planning commission meeting and you start talking and, and you can see that they haven't done their homework, so.
Exactly.
That's always fine.
So, but do you feel the same way? Do you feel like our, that we have done that?
Yes. I believe that the people on this commission, including Tom Priest, read the packets prior to coming to the meeting. I don't.
No, Matt, Matt.
Um, yeah, I mean, uh, so far the, the discussions have been very informed, um, it's not like. Um, oh, you know, people aren't saying, I haven't had a chance to really read through this or anything like that, so, yeah, so far I.
So that might be why you get a bit more questions, because we are reading our packets.
That's, that's good, I'd rather, I'd rather have more questions than silence.
Thousand percent, and like, we're not Eagle, we're not Vale, we're not, we are Minter. So it's completely different.
But it's just, uh, it's really important to me that, that we don't gloss over the work we've done over the past bunch of years.
Oh, I thoroughly agree.
We did.
I thoroughly agree, we need to.
That's a lot of work, yeah.
So Matt, maybe I can share some of that work with you now. As we launch into the code assessment process, you'll have that as some context in addition to stakeholder comments and the planning commission comments.
Yeah, I, I think that would be great, and, and to reiterate what Scott said, we talked about. Sort of what the right timing was to, to bring back that work and I think. Um, as, as Scott noted, once we get the code assessment done and, and kind of have some, some better direction on the. The whole code update process, um, bringing back that work to, to say, here's how it aligns with. What the community plan is saying, um, I think will be, will be a beneficial conversation to have.
Is there any way for those of us that weren't on the commission, are we allowed, are you allowed to share that same document that you're sharing with Matt?
Yeah, I think so, I mean, it's an internal document, but it, document, but, or documents, there are multiple versions of. The work, but if I can find something that is understandable and, and usable.
Are you referring to when we went through what's allowed here, what's not allowed there, that part of the document?
We touched, we touched everything. We have, uh, we had, uh, analyses of existing, uh, every lot in town. Lot coverage, impervious coverage, setbacks, not so much building height, I don't remember. Um, we had gone through the entire definition section, Article two. And rewritten it and added probably twenty or thirty new definitions.
Actually done.
We did a new, uh, land use table. Uh, consolidating all the districts into one land use table and we went through all the different uses by right, limited uses. Decided that, I keep coming back to this cause it sticks out, but like flea markets. We, we got to flea markets and like, uh, whatever, so, yeah, we, we did a lot of work.
Maybe merge that into your code assessment somewhat and then we can review it all.
Oh yeah, I mean, I would love some of the, especially definitions, sounds like good reading for me.
Oh, you'd love it.
I know, I would.
Okay. Yeah, I'm happy to share all of that stuff.
Oh my God, are you sure you wanna do that?
You and Matt gotten to the point where there's like, you have a bunch of red flags and, and these are the, the hot topics that you know. You're gonna need to drill down on, or is it just kind of a broad stroke, you're gonna start at the top and go?
I already have my button stuff, uh, you know, just for the last six or seven years, I, I know what the things are that are needing the most attention. Matt might be starting to get a picture of that, but I'm gonna let him form his own opinion, uh, with a clean set of eyes and.
Take the work we did, how much of that?
Right. Potentially.
Like, for example, I have a running spreadsheet of a hundred and nine different rows. Actual sections, sections, different things that we have to clean up. Address, and I guarantee I do not have all of them. Just, okay, we say this thing in this section and then four sections later, we have a completely different thing, like, things like that. And, right, so.
Madison, you have a hundred and nine?
I have a hundred and nine rows, yes.
Matt, you and I have talked about this, you know, all this previous work, Madison's, uh, spreadsheet, you know, really down into the nitty gritty. Maybe now's a good time to, um, describe what you're gonna be doing as a code assessment kind of high level. And how that's gonna translate into the, the minutia.
Yeah, I, I mean, so the code assessment, it's really an, an analysis, a high-level analysis of the. Um, the town's existing code, so it, it, it's not gonna get into on, on page such and such or section such and such, we need to change. Uh, language from should to shall, things like that, it's gonna be. Um, more talking about, uh, suggestions for, I, I know for me, looking at the town's code. Um, is reorganizing and reformatting it is, is a priority. Uh, so that it, it's more u- uh, so that it's, it's usable. Um, it, it's sort of, it's more intuitive to use the code. It, it's sort of, it's more intuitive to use the code. Um, I, I know a lot of codes and I've worked with codes where. You do have this patchwork over the years of, of different updates and. Uh, it sounds like where you have redundancies or, or contradictions within the code where. One section says this and then you go to another section, it says something completely different and, and those are always fun to, to deal with. So, yeah, the code assessment will provide some suggestions for how to reformat and reorganize the, the town's code. Some suggestions for, again, these, these priorities of making the code clear and predictable. So. Offering suggestions for how that could happen. And, and then, um, some suggestions for how to maybe consolidate character areas. And, and the zoning districts within the character areas to. To, to be a little more straightforward and, and less confusing. So things like that, some, some really, um. A bit more detailed, I, I mean, it's, it's going to offer some detail and suggestions or recommendations, but not. A- again, not page by page, here's what needs to change. It's, it's really intended to provide. Uh, a roadmap for updating the code. If, if that makes sense.
And I, I'm going to, I'm going to ask, um, the planning commission to, um. Trust me a little bit on when we share things like the previous work. And, and when we get into that level of detail versus trying to let us get through the code assessment and high-level stuff first. You know, hopefully it's, it's become apparent that we're trying to start at a point and take you through a process. Not to torture you, um, not to hold things back or to not share things with you, but to focus our attention on. Different phases of this project before we get too far ahead of ourselves in the details.
Yeah, I just don't want to. I don't want to. Necessarily spend time and money on things that we've already done. I understand there's going to be a lot of. But I don't want to start from square one. And then have a consultant being paid to do work that we did two years ago, only to.
Right.
Same answers and go over the same things when we may have a roadmap where hopefully. I know you have to do what you have to do with Matt to get to that starting point. That at some point when he's done with that, I'm hoping that the overlay of the work we've done. Either. Fits a lot of them and aligns with them that we can talk about, or they go, this is. That, that works garbage, it's not going to work, you know, but. Be for us to at least decide if it fits or doesn't.
Where it would all mold together and then that could be those discrepancies underneath. That's it.
Yeah, and I, you know, I definitely look, you know, what Chef's saying, what Lynn's saying, you know, I. I look, you know, I look forward to seeing the code assessment. Yeah, you know, so. Uh, you know. You'll say, oh, Michael has issues with this, Michael has issues with that, with that, you know. What I've told my wife is, is the one thing I've learned from planning and zoning. It's good to listen. And you listen and, and. And everything, every, you listen. No, you listen and, and, and sometimes, you know. A lot of times you're on the same page. It, it, you know, certain stuff, sometimes you're not. And, uh, my wife's response was, maybe you could learn how to do that at home.
Oh, my God, I was totally going to make that joke, but I can't do it at all. Yeah.
But it's true. I, I, I don't have a set mindset and look forward to. You know.
Say you got two ears and one mouth.
Yeah, one eye.
Double. You're supposed to use these twice as much.
Going on to tonight.
I think what Jeff was trying to say is like. I love laughter, but everything that we've done so far or you guys have done in the past. Is not to be discarded. Like, so let's move forward with what you've worked with. And like, let's make sure that we're working towards that direction.
I agree. I would just caution you that, you know, that was two and a half, three years ago. And I suspect that a lot of it will still be relevant and use, usable. But we need to keep our, an open mind as to. How we move maybe beyond that work. Because that work was. Was wholly confined to our existing format, just making it a little better and cleaning up some stuff. I don't hear that that's where we're going. I don't think that's what the community plan is directing us to do. Is to keep the same format and to keep, right? Yeah.
I'm, I'm in total agreement with that.
Some of the nuts and bolts in the weed stuff that we did, evaluating all the different potential uses by right. I think a lot of that stuff will carry forward. But it also might change when we start getting into, how do you consolidate, uh, character areas and zone districts? S E group, when they took us through the community plan, already told us that. Well, they told me internally that the work that we had done previously in my draft of the rewrite of chapter sixteen was eh. Okay, not great, right? Um, which is why we're, we're taking another stab at this. And we've got Matt to help us and.
Okay, well, why don't we do this? Like, why don't we take like a Saturday and like do something together? Yes, ma'am.
Please let Scott finish.
Uh, I'm done.
Oh, he's done. Okay, sorry.
What, what, what stage?
I was just thinking like, we could all put our heads together, like, come together on a Saturday, get it done. Get it formatted and be done. Like, why don't we just do that together?
That, that is, that's aspirational.
That's funny.
Uh, if someone could get.
I'll make it happen. I'll take the day off to do it. Yeah.
I wish it were.
And I never get a day off, so just saying.
You know, let us, let us help you with the heavy lifting and it, you know, we'll, we'll get through this and I think we're going to come out with something that we're really proud of. So.
I think that's a no.
I don't think you have a lot of Saturday takers.
Yeah.
First free Saturday is in March, so.
Yeah.
I don't care if it's on a Tuesday, you guys. I don't give.
Well.
Okay, so.
So save our billable hours with Matt for, for the real work and.
Oh, yeah, I forget, I forget about how much it costs. Yeah, I got you. I got you.
No, no, I'm, I, this has all been good. It's always good. I love engaging conversations with you guys. Um. But if we, if there's no more comments on the summary or where we're heading next, um.
Let that go.
Yep.
Matt, thank you so much for coming. We're going to continue some of this existential conversation on our own.
All right.
Thank you, Matt.
It was a great thing. And when do we get to hear from you next? December?
I, I think that's a, yeah, worth a discussion with Scott. I know, uh, as far as the code assessment, our goal is to. Wrap that up here this month and, um. Probably bring that to you, uh, for a discussion, a review and discussion, uh, in early December, if that works.
That's our one meeting that we're planning.
Thank you.
We're trying to, again, based on your, um, input and, and making good use of our time, we're trying to hit that December date. So we can at least get that and then look towards January to start the actual code.
Thanks, Matt. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Bye. What's next? Oh. Okay, hold on, hold on. Did you want to say any more about this process, Scott? That we're going on?
I don't, as long as I have a chance at some point before we adjourn to just give you a quick update on one thing that I am working on. That's all I ask. So we've got the next thing is, um, staff reports and managers report, I think is next on the agenda.
Managers report is in here. The only thing I have to say is downtown development authority does not relate to a call to the cemetery.
Irons and nets.
But the, the commentary under that particular item is disturbing.
Yes, it is disturbing.
I have to repeat myself.
I understand.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah. Other than that, I don't think, has anybody else got anything to say on any of those subjects, questions, answers? No.
No, ma'am.
Um, I have one, but why don't you guys, you go ahead. Uh, this is just mine.
I have two things. The first, the first thing, the first thing. I know. I know that when we, that we pass everything for foundation framing and final ILC, it's the purpose and the intent. Idea Lee is. You know, final your height and everything's right. And the key is, is that if somebody's off on their foundation. They have their ILC, so they know, they know they have an issue before they get too far along. And then. It's built and then we find out we have an issue. I don't know exactly. Maybe one or two since we actually rehashed that out, that that was, uh. The process we are continuing on, but. My, my real question is, is because we know the purpose, so they don't get too far if there's a problem. And I really think, I, I don't even, I'm not even sure, you know, maybe Taylor Street. Is one, you know, is one of them, but the intent is, is that there's a problem. And I don't know of any problems, but that's the intent. So my question is, is are we receiving them? And have, you know. Cause I don't know the answer. You guys are on top of it. You've been getting them from people. There you go.
It's a requirement.
Well, we got a lot of requirements.
Pass go until they get us that stuff.
No, so you're getting it as they go. So, so it's, that's, so the intent. Of i- is, 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 is working. It clears the town from having issues.
To your point though, when we updated the code and within the last six months to clarify all the different things that are required for. DRB submittal, the boundary survey, so we get a good survey when, before someone starts and then the building process, which. Clarified and added some steps and some ILCs along the way. That doesn't have an intent statement at the beginning of that section. It doesn't say the reason why we're asking for all these things is to make sure you don't screw up. And with, right, we're not asking for a variance.
Yeah.
So that's something, that's an opportunity to improve. That's just a great example of where an intent or a purpose statement can.
Actually watching out for them and watching out for ourselves at the same time.
We care about the built environment in our community and we want to make sure you are, you know.
You don't want to scuttle neighbor.
Yeah.
At the end of the project.
Yeah.
So how do, how do we do that right now?
With an ILC.
Lots of ILCs.
How do we do, how do we clarify intent or how do we make sure people are following the rules?
Both.
Well, right now we have a code that requires them to provide these surveys as they go through the building process. So that's our. Check and balance on the process in the.
Okay, I just wanted to hear you say that.
Yeah, in the future, I think we have an opportunity, if we have an aspirational code with aspirational language or just. Clearly, um, clearly spelling out what it is we're after with a particular regulation. Uh, boy, we've got a lot of opportunities in every section of our code to do that. Which would be really pretty novel instead of having.
It cleans, it clears the homeowner, the town and everybody.
Yeah.
There you go.
Just to make sure like our, oh, we can cross our Ts and dot our Is. That's what I'm saying.
Well, this is a question more for. Hey, right in your wheelhouse. All right. When, when we get an ILC. The ILC from, from my history or experience with it, it, it's. Surveyor comes out and says you put the foundation where you're supposed to put it. Does an ILC go vertical and tell you where the eaves are too? This, they're all supposed to, right?
Just, yeah.
It does?
Well, that's my question because I, I'm hearing rumblings of. Some projects in town that may have or may not have. Maybe built their use out further than they were supposed to.
Okay.
Well, I think that.
Who is it? Where do they live?
Say who they are.
Let me, let me, let me.
No, 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 no. Please hold on. Finish.
I'm just saying like, if the ILC is supposed to not only tell and survey the foundation in relation to the lot lines and the setbacks. And stream setbacks and all that stuff, but then when it goes vertical. And horizontal and it says the eaves are eighteen inches into the setback. Or no more than eighteen inches into the setback like the code allows. Great. But if they're beyond that, then. We would know about it, right? Because the ILC would come in and obviously a homeowner is not going to want to give you an ILC that shows that they're. Eaves are five feet.
That's right.
Three feet.
Wait, wait, now, okay, that being said. That being said. We actually have all this on the books back in two thousand eight. Ashley Schiff, Scott, Madison, in two thousand eight, I had foundation framing and midpoint ILC. Back in two thousand eight, eve overhangs were not included. So technically with the new, so when we get into the discussion of the new code and go into how we're measuring. We look, I, I can't wait so we can clarify where we're measuring from. At that point, back then. When the drawings provided by the town, you weren't allowed to count your overhangs. If I count my overhangs, I'm like twenty-six feet, eh? You know, that being said, it was just the exterior wall for the ridge.
Right.
And the, and, and that was required at the time. It got. Shuffled around with, we had a lot of code stuff. Now we have it back on the books. And in what Scott was saying and the explanations of the intent. If, if that needs more clarification or I, I believe that what we passed. Should include that. And I think that was our intent. Now Scott will have an answer as to whether or not.
Ooh, me, me, me.
Scott will have an answer. Clarify.
So guess what? We have yet another opportunity. Under framing inspection required, this is under our new section of building, uh, process requirements. Requires an ILC verifying the location of all roof ridge heights and locations of exterior walls. Doesn't say.
That's my point.
Okay.
Yep.
If it's measured by midpoint, you want to mark.
We just miss stuff, which is every code that I've ever worked.
I put the tails on his. I've seen some big eaves, man. I've seen some really big eaves. I've seen some big eaves, you know.
Okay, let's iron that out. Let's iron it out. Let's.
Well, the problem is, and Michael will be the expert on this, but obviously if you have a steep roof. With no snow fence or no snow clips and you've got an exceptional eve into your setback, guess where the snow goes?
The back, the back, the back went, way back went. The tur- with, with the pictures that I have from the town, you know, way back when. No, yeah, maybe. But the eve, the eaves weren't included and it was the exterior wall, the eaves weren't included. And adapt me, go half the distance in the upset back. Like you said, eh, 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 so if the eaves are included. But with the eaves included, then technically you're going an extra, you're two and a half feet, you're going eighteen inch, eighteen inches. You, you, you gain eighteen inches of height if you get to count your eaves. But at two and a half feet on a ten, twelve pitch, you better have some serious snow retention.
Right.
And, uh, serious snow retention and gutters. You know, and some people, you're going to love this, you know, some people, you know, some people, some people have, you know. Issues with certain neighbors, you know, and so snow retention and.
Okay, Michael, are we done with this question?
No, I love it. I look for it. Can we, let me know when you want to do roofs.
Right?
I, I would love to, because whatever it is. It is.
You just, you know, once again, we've got something we can improve apart.
To, to the, the whole point, Lynn, was that. We, as a board, have approved a lot of plans that went to the maximum. Of an eighteen-inch overhang into the five-foot setback. And we've allowed, because most of the plans we've seen in the last ten years are all built. To the maximum allowed by the code. If the ILCs are not verifying that the eaves are going beyond that. If the ILCs are not verifying that the eaves are going beyond that and the code doesn't require it, then we're missing the boat.
Right. I agree. Then we need to enforce it.
No, you can't enforce something that's not written.
No, and Jeff is corrected. I think, I actually think that I have eighteen inch overhangs, but regardless.
So what are you talking about now? We should just enforce it.
Come on, I got the ILCs. But listen, that being said, I, I, I think I've seen some two and a half foot roofs, three foot roofs.
Michael, you had a second question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. Okay. We're getting excited about roofs. No, I have a second.
Everybody, second question.
Second, second question in regards to Jeff and Matt's time and this and that.
I mean, I just agree with you gentlemen. Don't get me wrong, but I think we've extended that conversation.
Yes, I'm, I'm sorry. Look, when we talk about roofs, I get excited. But anyway, um. My second, my second question is, it's just a general question, you know, we have. We're rewriting this code and we have, you know, we have Matt on board, like Jeff said. A lot of homework, Jeff and Lynn have said, you guys have done a lot of homework prior to myself and Amanda being here. So the. And so, and I understand the intent. So, but the, the hard, the hard question is, the hard question is, do we have any idea how much? The code rewrites costing us?
So much, um.
Rough idea.
No, um.
No? And we're doing it.
A blank. We, we do not have a.
Dance.
No. We, we estimated that, uh, Matt's time would be anywhere from ten to twenty thousand dollars over the course of a year. Which is not a huge chunk of money when it comes to code rewrites and stuff like that. We're going to try to do as much in-house as we can. Does that?
Time is ever close. Down that run.
We're, we're at a thousand, maybe not even a thousand dollars yet of his time.
For, for.
We budgeted.
Well, you've budgeted seventy thousand for miscellaneous, because I just read the budget today. I have read half the budget, um, and it has everything in there and it says seventy thousand miscellaneous. So I assume that's where it would be put in, but it doesn't say Matt rewrite of code.
It's not all Matt.
And then, and you, you, you're, what you, like, whatever you do is contract based, whatever you do is contract based. So. It's included in your time, what you're doing, I guess.
Um, there, there have been some substantial savings, um, for my time over the last few years because of the work that Madison has done to. Pick up a lot of that slack, um. And other reasons. So whatever I started with as a contract. Um, per year, I, I haven't been billing at that amount for at least four years. So there's, there's a savings in the planning director contractor work.
So you're not additionally charging for the work on the, on the rewrite?
Part.
No, so I, I give a discount, a substantial discount to the town of Intern and all my towns, um, for municipal work. All my other work that I do for any private development that comes through, that gets billed at my normal, normal rate and passed over to developers. So this falls under the discounted rate, normal business hour kind of stuff that I do for the town.
So it's sort of opening, somewhat open because we don't know.
It, there was an estimate. Michelle asked me for an estimate going into this to figure out where in the budget it would fall and how we could pay for it without going out for. Um, you know, to have a project budget and doing an RFP and bringing someone in. It just didn't make a lot of sense to do that. So.
That estimate, Scott.
I already told you.
Ten to twenty.
Ten to, ten to twenty.
Oh, I thought, I'm sorry. I misunderstood. I thought that you're, you had additional time building a discount rate on top of that ten to twenty.
No, all I'm saying is, yeah. Yeah, and.
Whatever he's doing for the town. It's not, he doesn't add on separate for this.
You can just bill extra for the.
I'm going to start billing extra for planning commission meetings.
Clear.
Hey, wait a second.
Sage caught that.
We love you. Don't think we don't love you. We just need to figure out our town.
Okay, Jeff, go ahead. To be clear.
The town council directed us to rewrite the code.
Right.
They're in charge of the budget.
It's not our job to.
Well.
From my, my understanding, it's not our job to count the pennies to get that done. That's.
That wasn't my intended question.
Be respectful of the towns.
We have to be respectful of it, but we were tasked to do something. It's, it's Michelle and, and the council's job to make sure that it's.
But so here's the agglomeration of this whole thing. That means we need to keep our conversations more precise when we're going through it to keep the tongue down.
Anytime we're doing a project like this, I think that's true. Whether it's, or it's some other project and.
Yeah, we're not here to ramble and have, have a party. We're here.
We should, when Matt comes and does his presentation, if we have questions for him, we should deal with it. We should then say, thank you, Matt. Good night. Thanks for coming. Further questions can be perhaps directed to Scott.
No, my question was, I had no idea. I was just curious.
I hear you.
Yeah, Lynn, you're totally right.
I know.
I was, I was.
I'm happy to share that and I think Jeff's right. I.
I don't make the damn budget, so.
I don't.
All right, guys.
The job is like I'm counting pennies. That is, I know what like our job is and do it well.
Exactly.
You know, don't come like not reading the packet or asking questions that how they're irrelevant, like when somebody's.
Hey, the bottom line is that we care about like our town, period. So if we have questions, we're going to make sure that they're answered, period.
And when, yeah, those big checks. Whenever, whenever you're doing a job, especially in the building, it's straight. When you're doing a job and you're into the job, you got to finish the job. It, it's, it's not about count pennies. You got to finish the damn job.
That's right.
Everything.
Okay, planning commission comments are over.
Just like shut.
Are they?
Yes.
I think they are. Yeah.
I have one thing. Early Christmas present. Um, I had some downtime between the chaos that is, uh, surrounding. Getting all of our final documents ready for council and intern north next week. And low behold, it took me about twenty minutes to craft an ordinance that, uh, takes aim at the two hundred percent AMI. Um, because you guys have been asking for that. That's kind of a low hanging fruit type of thing. Um, so I'm hoping at the next. The next meeting, December.
Thirteenth.
Yeah.
Well, on here it says.
What? That's a great Christmas present.
We said Thanksgiving because most of us are here over Thanksgiving. We, if we had any material, we were open to meet.
It says on here, future meetings, November twenty-second.
Yeah.
I wouldn't have taken it off even if we had canceled it. It's still technically a future meeting until it is officially canceled.
Got you. Okay, good.
Oh, is that the, like a, 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 is that like a voice from God?
Just kidding, you guys.
Everybody, hold on. Scott, what is our next meeting? Can you have it done by the twenty-second? Are you here the twenty-second?
I don't know if we have time to advertise. I, I still, I just wrote it today. The next step is to put it in front of, um. No, the next step is to put it in front of our, uh, town attorney.
Oh.
And so. Right. Given, given the amount of work and the priority. Level right now with the town attorney, it is certainly not on a one-off ordinance right now. I just wanted to make sure that you understood that I, I heard you. I understand that you guys are interested in things like that and I'm trying to. Make hay while the sun's shining and.
All right. So you just gave us a Christmas present, but you really didn't?
If I can get it to you before Christmas, if we can get the town attorney to review it and we can advertise it in time, I think the December meeting is probably more realistic.
Yeah, you go.
God, I'm sorry. Can you, I asked this last time and I forgot and I don't know what the AMI is and the intent. And you can make it quick. I'll take it in.
Those highways.
Air, area, area median income.
Uh huh.
So that's a metric that the state uses and, uh, in the county and then the towns use to. Put, uh, people, families, either individuals or families or couples into a bracket of how much money they earn. And how much, how much house they can afford. So.
And we, and we use that what for future developments where certain houses are restricted for AMIs?
That is certainly one of the things that, that's one of the reasons why we have it is because we have housing. Regulations now, affordable housing or community housing regulations and it's, it's based on, you know, uh, yeah. Our target goal of, of, of where we're trying to hit, right now it says two hundred percent AMI. So two hundred percent.
Of the average.
Of the area median income. Most area median income targets are between a hundred and a hundred and forty percent.
Yep. Hence why that's a Christmas present.
Yeah. And so we identified right after we adopted our housing. Guidelines that two hundred percent AMI really isn't going to help anybody. Um, if we're trying to require, uh, you know, pretty minimal amount of housing units that are debt deeded to, uh, folks earning. A hundred percent AMI or a hundred and twenty-eight percent AMI. That, that's the, the middle. Those are the teachers and the fire, firefighters and folks like that is how most people look at that.
Well, I remember once you mentioned that before and you said something like fail was even less than like two hundred.
Well, it, yeah, and it depends, you know, there's most rental, uh, AMI targets are aimed at like eighty percent AMI. So. Uh, lower income folks, maybe not even lower income as you would normally think of that. It's if the, I don't even know what the area median income is at a hundred percent right now. Um. Yeah. So it's not, we're not talking poverty level. We're just talking people that are, that work one or two or three jobs in this community that make a good living and that are still struggling to find housing. That's the battle we've been fighting. That's the battle we will continue to fight and that's why two hundred percent AMI doesn't do anybody any good.
Also, it's, 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 it's a good thing that you're just, uh, uh, the.
Looking at it.
You guys.
If we're truly trying to keep locals here and families.
It's a great thing.
No, no. All right. You know, I didn't know what it meant. I didn't know. I, thanks for explaining it to me for the second time.
It's okay.
I appreciate.
She's not telling us what it's called.
You have finished the word. You got it. That's the.
I, I did pretty well in twenty minutes.
Good job.
What's that?
Good job.
Right now I have it at a hundred and forty. I'm going to reach out to Tori Franks at Eagle County Housing Authority to see what she would recommend and if that is. If that's the right amount. So I've, I've got a little work to do. I, I just, what I literally did was craft an ordinance that is ready to go. Um, the only thing that changed in that section of the code is scratching through two hundred and putting a hundred and forty. Um, so I'll farm that out to Tori and the housing authority at Eagle County to see if that's the right target. Um, and then bring it to you for discussion and. Once we're ready to go.
Can't wait to talk about that one. That's cool.
But I know that's a high priority and again, that's kind of an easy thing to. Um, get done. So.
Sage, is there any way that you can share a screen and be on the screen here? Not just tonight, but in the future.
Yeah, actually I'll, I'll represent.
You know, only reason I say that is because up there you can't see what's going on down here and who's ready to jump in on a conversation.
Yes, ma'am. I totally, I'll be there.
It might help control this back and forth a little bit.
Yes, ma'am. I'll be there.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Okay. Climate commission comments, future meetings, we're back to that. Do we have anything for November twenty-second? No, no. What day is Thanksgiving? Twenty-third, twenty-first. So that means.
I, I do have to tell you, I'm not going to be there for the next meeting.
Okay. So we shall cancel that meeting?
No, don't do that.
No, Madison said it's highly likely because we have nothing for it.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
So we'll, we'll wait and see. And you will let us know. And so then the next scheduled meeting is December thirteenth. Michael, are you here?
Yes.
Jeff, are you here? I'm here.
I'm here. Yes, ma'am.
And I think town priest will be back. Yes, we will have a full house and that's when Matt's possibly coming back. So that would be good.
Be there or be square.
Done for, Jeff.
I'm glad we're such a friendly commission.
All right, we've done pretty good.
There are four.
Make a motion during tonight's meeting.
By Jeff, by Michael, all in favor.
Aye.
Thank you.
Night, guys. Love you.
Love you.
Excellent.